Hey, good morning, everybody. Staff meeting October Tuesday, October 14th. Good to see everyone today. Tom, take it away.
Two issues today, Commissioner, to talk about. One is the traffic safety discussion that we had from August and September. Mr. Packer will give a presentation today on on traffic analysis and how his department handles and manages traffic safety at the intersection. And the sheriff is also here. I think he has some data, some crash data over the last few years that he can also lend his expertise to. So that's issue number one. And then the second issue is the commission a week and a half or so ago, received a letter from the Fire Steering Council that is making the rounds in the community. And I think you have all seen and read a copy of it. I thought we would discuss that. The fire chief, I'm sure will be here by that time. And I believe someone from the Fire Steering Council is planning to be here also around 11 o'clock or so. So we got two issues to discuss. We can jump on the traffic safety issue and come back around to.
I think it's a good idea. Let's start there. Lynn, good morning, bud.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Packer, I'm your deputy, your your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. Sometimes I wish I was still deputy. I am here today with Tia Ramat. She is our Traffic Engineer. And as Tom alluded, we are going to be here talking about traffic analysis, as well as addressing some questions that have been, or some inquiries that have been made recently regarding our pavement intersections, as well as speed on the county. So the first thing we're going to talk about is speed limits. We've been asked about, you know, basically, you know, why 55 miles an hour? What sets that? Where, how much of our system is at 55 miles an hour? So what I have here is, what it comes down to is 478 over 583 miles that are on our county system are currently have a speed limit of 50 to 55 miles an hour. So that's 82%. If you look at the township roads, townships have 1,030 miles, of which about 1,000 of them, just under 1,000 of them, are at 55 miles an hour. So when you add the two together, really 92% of the county roads out there are at 55 or greater. So I get asked, why? Why 55? Why not 65? Why not 45? And it comes down to the KSA 81558, and that sets the statutory speed limit for all, you know, all roads, whether it be in cities or counties or townships. And you'll note the third one down, any county or township highway is 55 miles an hour. Yes, we do have the ability to conduct speed studies and traffic analysis. And we have local authority to be able to change that within reason. We can go as high as 65, and we can take it down to 30. But you will find in Kent, I'll say the Midwest, but specifically, I'll speak to Kansas. When you get into your county and township roads, pretty much countywide or statewide, you're going to find that your county and township roads are 55 miles an hour. A lot of places will tell you that they go by the state, the statutory speed limit, because that's what the 85th percentile of speed is doing. We actually find that the 85th percentile of speed is actually going more than 55 miles an hour. And simply artificially reducing that speed limit isn't going to make them comply. It's actually just going to create disparity, greater disparity between those that obey the law and those that aren't. And that creates a dangerous situation. So the primary factor for the 55, and for us maintaining the 55, is driver expectations. If you grew up in the county and that's what you're used to, you don't, there is no speed limit sign. Statutory, it's 55 miles an hour. They teach you that in driver's ed, and that's the speed limit that you travel. It's and that's driver expectations is what we hold on to as one of our guiding principles of our traffic control and why we do the things we do. So I also get asked about the paved intersections versus unpaved intersections and what kind of stop controls we have. So we have 91 paved intersections on our system, and those are the, just the paved intersections, fully paved in all directions. 42 were two-way stop controlled, which is about 46% of our system. 13 are always stop, which is 14%. 17 are signalized at 19%. And then we also have 19 T-intersections, which makes up 21%. If you, obviously, those percentages go up if you don't look at the T-intersections. But in, in general, overall, 67% of our intersections are on, on the county system are stop-controlled for the minor leg, minor traffic leg. And that, and that's how we use as our means of intersection control. This is pretty much common nationwide in your rural and suburban areas. We're pretty much right in line with that. So you guys have heard me talk about the MUTCD with a manual on uniform traffic control devices. That's our primary resource for traffic control. Unsignalized intersections are the most common type of intersection control. The overarching goal is to use the least restrictive intersection control that balances safety and efficiency. The order that we, we look at these is no intersection control. You'll find that in urban and suburban neighborhoods, there's no intersection control whatsoever. You also find that pretty common in our lower volume township roads as well. One step above that is your yield control. You can do that in a four-way or two-way fashion. And then after that, we look at two-way stop control. And then finally, we get to four-way stop control. Now, in between those restrictions, the levels we, in between those restriction levels, we have different things that we can do to help highlight the stop controls. And we've talked about it, street lighting, retro reflective posts, advanced warning signs, various sizes of signs, flashing beacons, pavement marking, rumble strips, the list goes on. And we employ those in between, taking those, what I would call like those milestones, A, B, C, and D options. So I did, before handing this over to Tia to talk about our analysis and how we do that, I did want to mention a new tool we have available to us. The Sheriff's Department has graciously granted us access to the Socrata dashboard. We just got access to it this last week. We also, in addition to that, working with Sergeant Monroe, who is working on getting us reports that can be automatically and regularly given to us on a regular basis. What this is going to do for us is kind of change how we do things. Right now, we're alerted to serious and fatal crashes as they occur. But the fender benders, the minor injuries, we have to go out and pull that data versus having it pushed to us, which, which is what we're looking at doing now. And that's going to be a little bit, you know, I'm, I'm gonna stop short of saying it's a game changer, but it's going to change how we're looking at things because we don't have to wait for someone to call in and tell us about a concern they have about an intersection because there's been a bunch of minor accidents that we didn't know about because we haven't heard about them. If you look at the heat map, this is something that's available on Socrata. And so obviously, the red is what, and you're in the red, you know, is down in Valley Center in this particular case. More traffic, more crashes. I think everyone understands that. But we can look at the outliers, like here, you can see a red dot out on 151st Street. We can now look at that and go, hmm, okay, what's going on there? So I zoomed in on that. And this, I guess I gotta be careful. I see that as red. I don't know if everyone else does. I'm colorblind. So I just see it as darker. And, but there's a red-green that's a little darker over there on 151st, your far right. I zoomed in on that, and that ended up coming to three crashes that happened in the last two years. That two were intersectional, one was non-intersection related. So not a big deal. But it was enough for me to go in and go, hey, what's there? And let me go see. Instead of waiting for something to come out there, we can look at that type of information now and go out there. On top of that, we'll be getting regular reports of all the crashes, not just the serious and the fatal crashes, but we'll get all of those. And that, once again, I just want to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department. They're working with us to get us that data so that Tia and her team can look at that data as it's coming through and have an opportunity to go through it and figure out if there's areas we need to look at. It's not quite, I know we talk about being preactive versus reactive. It's not quite to a whole lot of changing us over from being reactive, but we are going to be able to look at those intersections before they get to the point of having more serious crashes, before we're actually looking at them. Happy to answer any questions about what I've just presented on, or I can hand this over to Tia. She's going to speak to our traffic analogy, analysis and our current actions, and we can do questions at the end.
Okay, Lynn, thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Tia?
Thank you.
Morning, Tia. Welcome.
Okay. Well, I took the job two years ago, and I came to you from a roundabout path. I did a lot of work on the West Coast before coming back home to Kansas, so I'm back, happy to be back here. I didn't start with no data. We were, when I came on board in Public Works, Lynn and the crew were wrapping up the local road safety plan with Trans Systems and KDOT. And it looked back at five years worth of data, 2016 to 2020, and listed all of our intersections and assigned it a safety score based on performance. And I took that as a place to begin when I started looking at individual intersections and checking to see if things looked as they should be. So I'll just back up a little bit, and I'd like to talk about what a challenge road safety can be. Cedric County has been ranked fifth statewide in terms of traffic safety. We fell behind, and this is in 2020, Johnson, Butler, Riley, and Shawnee Counties, which isn't terrible. When, back five years ago, I use this as a baseline because it's a complete year. Traffic safety and data is always being cleaned, if you will, and this is a very clean statistic. They had six pedestrian deaths countywide, including inside of Wichita. That number has climbed. We had one bicyclist death. We had nine deaths involving drunk drivers, unfortunately. And we all know that K-42 is our biggest challenge with KDOT roads. So that's a nice framework for where we really stand. We've had more problems with vulnerable road users recently, as I understand it, and I'm sure the sheriff will speak to that. But that's, that's just a point in time and a pin in where we are. We do have a lot of data at the county. The county has a ritual of every two years doing traffic counts on every single county road and every single intersection. So that is information I can use to do my job to assess intersection safety. I also had access to the Sheriff's Department, and they were very gracious with their accident data. And I have one go-to gal who is Megan, and I call her on the phone and say, I need three years worth of data. And she pulls a very complete set for me, and I'm very grateful. So it's a nice partnership. Lynn is making it better, getting me hands-on data, but for right now, this has worked for about two years. And I also have a beautiful sign inventory that tells me when signs are installed, what condition they're in, what's on our roadway. So it's never a mystery to me if we have things marked. And our fine public knows our office phone number pretty well, and I get a lot of phone calls every day. So there's a lot of inputs, but I've been able to isolate and do analysis on about 35 to 40 intersections since I began working here. And we've made a few changes, so I'll get into those. This is my Bible. We all have something that guides our professions. This is mine. It's manually informed traffic control. It was just reissued in 2023. KDOT will be adopting it hopefully by the end of this year. They have two years per the feds to adopt it or modify. And we've been leaning into it and using it heavily in our office, so I'm very happy to share it with you. And I want to, this is the part that I think I'm gonna lose you. I'll be honest. I'm going to do four or five slides about how I do my work. So if you will just bear with me and ask questions if I don't make sense, give me that grace, please. Okay? I'd like to talk about how we do traffic studies at the county. The first step is we gather information. We go measure the intersections. We, we gather our traffic volumes. We contact WAMPO. They have a travel model that projects growth over the next 20 years. And so different areas of the county have different growth rates depending upon what land uses are planned out there. We also look at new and upcoming land developments. A part of my job is to do land use review for the planning, well, and, you know, and put forth comments to the planning commission. So we, we are aware of what's happening through Tanya's group. And then we look at the accident histories. Typically, a three-year accident history is as far back as we have to go per the MUTCD to make informed decisions. So I'm going to pick on one of our intersections that everybody loves to talk about. It's 95th and Rock. An example of what the context looks like out there, we have two through lanes, north, south on Rock Road. We have one through lane east-west on 95th, and we have a weird little trail crossing, not quite at the intersection, but just west of the intersection. And we also have stop control out there in the east and west direction only. I have the WAMPO growth rates from the travel model. I'll get to those in a few slides. And there's a lot of land development happening out there. I contacted the City of Derby. They have a senior center that was a repurposed church, if you will. They are in the biz, they have a senior living complex planned. And then they have a park expansion, which is underway. And then they also have villas duplexes planned and a huge mixed-use residential development planned on that northeast corner. So there's a lot that's promised in that intersection. And so I also have three-year accident histories, and they showed only four correctable crashes. Just so you know, the, the threshold for action in an intersection with a three-year accident history is about six crashes, correctable crashes. And when I say correctable crash, it means like an ankle crash or a crash where somebody's hurt. So, you know, a fender bender where you bump into the person in front of you, not really correctable crash. So that's how we parse that out. So I have a tool called the ITE Trip Generation Manual, and that is, if you have a printed volume about as wide as the podium, it is a statistical set of studies for various land uses and the traffic they generate. So I can go in there and look up senior center, for example. For each thousand square feet of floor area, it generates XYZ trips. And so I could take how big that senior center was and project how many trips would be generated by that being built and that parcel of land. And then apply it to the surrounding road network. So, not interesting to you, interesting to me. I, then, once I have what those trips are every day, I can grow them per year. And that's with the MPO's growth model. And they give you a build and a no build, depending on whether Arc 95 happens. And with all that development and the promise of it will be built by 2030, I was looking at the no build option for an Arc 95, and it gave me a growth rate of 1.4 on Rock Road and 0.7 on 95th Street. So each of those roads had different growth rates, but those are what they, they are according to the travel model, and so we apply those as well. And then we run traffic analysis. So all that stuff gets wrapped into one big future analysis, and we get an answer about when this thing needs to be signaled. And the answer, and it's on the outcome slide, if everything gets built the way it was initially promised, yes, that intersection will need a signal by 2030. I have to clarify that not all of that development is happening as it was promised. So we're probably looking more realistically at a 10-year horizon, maybe for that traffic signal, but we know one's coming. And that's Lynn's job. He will work with the City of Derby and the developer and build partnerships and get that signal in place so that we're not building something far in advance of when we need it. The traffic analysis did not support the installation of an always stop at this time. Our crash data actually looks really good down there. And as an interim measure, we did add flashing beacons and cross-traffic-do-snot-stop flags as we typically do at intersections we're concerned about. So that's the end of the really boring slides. I promise I'll wrap this up fast. Do you have any general questions? Okay. Lynn also asked me to give you guys some general rolls of thumb about traffic. Stopping site distance, how fast it, how long it takes you to stop a car at 55 miles an hour is 610 feet. It's a long distance. So when you see our, your intersection ahead signs and you're driving, that's about at 610 feet, just as a visual reference. And that's to signal the driver, hey, you need to put the brakes on if you're going over 55. I also wanted to point out that a traffic signal doesn't always make an intersection function faster. This is the known information in the traffic design guide. At peak hour capacity, meaning the busiest time of day, a traffic signal takes about 55 seconds to get one driver all the way through it, just as an average. But an always stop, if it were there instead of the traffic signal, which the manual recommends you put an always stop in a dangerous situation when you don't have the funds yet for the traffic signal or the partnerships put together. It only takes 30 seconds, 35 seconds. So the roundabouts and the always stops are not inefficient forms of traffic control. They're just as valid as any other kind. And a big picture, these are not the warrants I use for when we apply always stops. But if you're looking at our big volume maps that we publish, where we give you way more information than you're interested in, if an intersection isn't balanced, like the Rock Road and 95th example, where you've got heavy traffic on one leg and not so heavy traffic on the other, you get into the always stop thresholds around 10,000 vehicles per day. And if it is balanced, meaning all the legs carry equal amounts of traffic, you, you get into that threshold a little sooner at around 8,000 vehicles per day. So and we also, I said this earlier, but we, we like to apply always stops to intersections with six or more correctable crashes in three years. That's the guidance in the, in the manual. So I'd like to talk a little bit about some future traffic interventions that we have on my desk that have not yet made it to y'all, so you know they're coming down the pipe. We have 45th and Ridge. It's situated less than a mile from Wichita and less than a mile from the City of Mays. It's a big intersection, and it's very safe. The, the, the safety record of this intersection is very good. It does meet traffic signal warrant analysis. And the question is, do we signalize it, or do we annex it to one of the cities and let them signalize it? 45th and Ridge, we also know, or 47th and Greenwich, we also know will be a future traffic signal. 79th and Hydraulic isn't exist, oh, I'm sorry.
Next slide.
Well, I'm sorry. Am I too fast?
You're, when you're talking about the.
Oh, future traffic interventions. Here you go. Thank you, Lynn. So we talked about 45th and Ridge, 47th and Greenwich, 79th and Hydraulic is also a future traffic signal. It's an existing always stop. MacArthur and 119th is a future traffic signal. It's performing quite well as an always stop. We just did that one last year. So, you know, and 95th and Rock, we just picked on. It's a two-way stop. It could be a future traffic signal if all that development takes off. So we will be watching very, with a lot of interest. 71st and Hydraulic is a future always stop. It almost meets the volume criteria. It's shy by one hour, so I'm checking that one every year. And we have two on the CIP. Of course, you know about 167th and 21st and 135th and 29th. And that is going to be an always stop very soon, right? And we will be hopefully turning that into a signal at some point. So KDOT's really aware of the statistics here, and they have adopted Vision Zero and the Safe System approach. And I think it's so wise, and I just wanted to really quickly, you know, we're, we're talking about people and traffic and how they behave. And that's not easy to address. So without belaboring this, it's not about safer roads or safer speeds, but it's also about how we talk to the public. And you'll see a lot of safety campaigns coming out from KDOT. And they're now making grants available to us to do similar safety campaigns. So, and vehicles are getting safer with technology, as we all know. So there are many facets in this. And I just wanted to show you, this is a slide from the Vision Zero, and it shows emphasis areas for them for roadway safety. And you'll see at the top of the list, they have roadway departure, up-given protection, impaired driving, older drivers, intersections. It's, it's not just signs and roadway markings anymore. It's, how do you, how do you get people to drive differently? And our top causes of crash fatalities are drunk driving, speeding, reckless driving and driving, drowsy driving are the top ones. And the distracted driving includes everything from talking to your kid in the backseat to eating in your car. You know, there, there are things that people do because it's comfortable. And it's, we need a shift. We are pursuing behavioral safety interventions. This is new to us. And it's because KDOT has opened up the safety programs at, for small grants, not big grants, but small grants. We've been, I've been cooperating much more with the Sheriff's Office. Captain Blick met me out of a school this morning. We talked about traffic safety out there. We are using warning devices more than we have in the past. We are applying for speed radar feedback signs on some of our really bad roads like MacArthur because we have people flying in down in MacArthur in excess of 100 miles an hour in the mornings. And we, we can get that down to 55 if we have a sign that blares it and the police officer patrolling it. And the Sheriff's Office has agreed to partner with us on these grants, so we're very lucky that way. And we are also applying for innovation and safety grants to make our traffic signals smart. Our traffic signals were built roughly when I got out of college, which was almost 30 years ago. Technology has changed, and I'll show you really quickly. This is the image that goes with our grant applications. The traffic signal controllers can now talk to EMS vehicles and buses. They can sense people versus cars versus bicycles. And they can also sense, they have radars built in, so they can sense when a car is driving toward them that's way faster than 55 miles an hour and not going to make that green or yellow light. So they can make small adjustments inside the controller to keep people safer. And if you have a fancy car, it can talk to your car and your dashboard and tell you if it's red, yellow, green as you're driving up to it, and that's awfully nice, too. So this, that's. So this, that's a 75% state and 25% us grant. And so far we have four signals that will get this treatment and we're hoping for the rest of them probably in two years. So just in closing, I don't want me to hammer this home, but people are really hard to change. This is a social problem. And it's really integrated with their environment and what influences them when they drive. And in my job, I really have to rely on data and evidence to make decisions and standardize how those, how we treat each intersection because of what Lynn was saying earlier with driver expectation. We can't have something different just at one location just because it was willed that way. Change, I, I think it's really important that we have uniform traffic control and we avoid oversaturation to retain the driver's interest. And I say oversaturation, I mean, too much of everything. We got into a habit with the county of using the flashing beacons at the dangerous intersections. And you'll see I'm starting to move them around as we make improvements at intersections. To be honest with you, I think I'm missing a slide. Did I gloss over one? Yes. I, I'm sorry. We are making changes at intersections really quickly. If you don't, if you'll bear with me. It's back, back, back.
There you go.
We're seeing huge, huge safety improvements, huge. We had five always stops installed in last year. I'll close with this. Before we did the safety intervention and put the always stop in there, each of these locations had 10 or more crashes. After we did it, we followed it for a year. It was two or less. So things work when you, when you do basic stuff. And so I would like to, you know, as your traffic engineer, take the time and really look at each intersection, do the analysis before we act. So that's my presentation and Lynn's presentation, and we're both here for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. Questions and comments?
Thank you for the presentation, Tia and Lynn. I guess I have a few questions. Going back to the earlier slides, you talked about the two-way stop control roads, I guess paved intersections. How many, how many of those are like Rock Road and 95th where you have four-way? You have four lanes in one direction and two lanes in the other direction. In other words, it's a broader intersection. I mean, it wasn't clear when you talked about 95th and Rock Road, make sure everybody understands that's four lanes and north, south versus two lanes east and west. It's one intersection, but it is a, it's a larger intersection.
Yes.
And you're looking at this breakdown, you have 46% are two-way stop control paved intersections. So how many of those intersections are larger, like the 95th and Rock?
We did not get a separate count for those that are four lane versus two lane. We have, I would, the vast majority are going to be your two lane roads. We don't have a significant number of roads that are four and five lane.
You guys do your, your analysis on the intersection and you look at traffic history. Has anybody ever talked to the drivers that survived? They're there to speak about why did they have a crash? They, they were blamed and maybe causing the crash. Do they talk about things like sunset sunrise? Or a lack of turn, you know, pressure for people to cross because they're feeling pressure from people lining up behind them. At that intersection, 95th and Rock Road, for example, in the morning, you have a sunrise issue and the evening you buy a sunset issue. And cars will, especially during rush hour, they'll start piling up behind you and there's a lot of pressure to cross four lanes of traffic. And because there's no turn lanes. So to me, those are mitigating factors that should be understood. Did you do the analysis? Go ahead.
Yes. And that is something that's taken into consideration. We have a similar issue at 167th and 29th Street. The to answer your first part of your question though, we don't directly go out and interview crash victims. But we do, if it's, that's part of the sheriff's report, we do get it. And if they note that the sun was a factor, that is typically in their narrative and we are able to get that information. We also have people that report to us like, hey, you know, we're getting hit by the sun. A lot of times the sun also will impact some of our older detection systems that are signalized. So we have to account for that as well. But yes, we do include that in our analysis when we're looking at things.
And then on your MUTCD guidance, your, your, one of your earlier slides, it's got the pink oval highlighted area. It says that the type of traffic control used in unsignalized intersections should be the least restrictive that provides appropriate levels of safety and efficiency for all you, all road users. So I guess my question would be, please define the words traffic control. What does that word of traffic control mean?
So we're talking about stop signs, yield signs, signalization.
Okay. We're not talking about the size of the stop sign or the flashing beacons.
Those are in, in addition to, to highlight the controls that are in place.
Okay. So when, does MUTCD dictate when to use a flashing beacon, for example, in a two-way stop?
It does give guidance for that, yes.
And again, if we were to add a flashing beacon at a two-way stop, there's no reason why we can't do that if we wanted to, I mean, I guess I would say, and I'm probably alone when I say this, but I think that an intersection that has a flashing beacon, I would say is deemed, in my personal opinion, a better configuration for intersection versus one that does not have that. I would prefer to see that if I could afford it. To me, it's an enhancement. It's a good thing to have that if you can afford it.
Yes. To Tia's point earlier, oversaturation, when you use something more and more and you're using it everywhere, everyone sees it, but it doesn't get recognized in the brain. So that's where our human behaviors come in, human factors come into play. So if you use it everywhere, it becomes mute, very muted over time. So that's why, as, as Tia noted, we've actually started rotating some of those beacons around so that they're not always just there and, and always there. The majority of our traffic is everyday commuter traffic. We don't have a, as in anywhere, we just don't have a lot of, you know, non-familiar traffic just driving our county roads. So therefore, when you move things like that, it's noticed. You make changes like just putting on retro reflective post tape. That's something that's noticed. Very simple, very cheap. It's there. I'll also note that when we do the beacons, it's about a $5,000, is that correct? Still correct? $5,000 per, per sign. Plus every three to four years, we're replacing those batteries at about another $2,500. So it is a continual maintenance thing and putting those up would have a significant budget impact if we had all 91 intersections with some type of flasher with it.
So I guess I have some concern that you take a beacon away from an intersection that currently has, it has it today or had it recently. And you took that beacon away to use it somewhere else. That would have, I would have concern about that.
So
I, I please speak to the microphone. People are watching this online.
Forgive me. We took them away at 79th and Greenwich about two months ago. We checked the safety data for a full year at that intersection. It had one crash in that midterm. And I'd be happy to go back and look in over the past month to see if we've had crashes since we took them away and repurposed them elsewhere.
Okay. I guess I have, I have concerns that, again, and I'm not suggesting that $5,000 isn't a lot of money. I have looked around on the internet to see what they cost. And I find similar beacons for less money than that. And I'm not saying we should go to Amazon and get these beacons, okay? But it seems like $5,000 is on the high end of what would be available out there. And I would say that a lot of these have batteries that would last through the daytime and it would be solar powered. So theoretically would be less maintenance over time. We should not, it should not require us to replace batteries hopefully. But I think there's, there are maybe some options out there that we have to take a look at. And I would, I have some caution about taking the flashy beacons away for the very same reason that you said, when people, when you reduce some of the visibility items, I, I think there's, again, I'll, I'll step out there and say, I know we had some concern about removing some of these things that had been in place. If someone has an accident, they may come back and say, I was used to a flashing beacon there and it suddenly wasn't there. So, you know.
Right. But we're changing the intersection too, as we add the always stop configuration. That was not a common traffic control thing that Mark Forrest would consider here. And so you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to put them where people can navigate the always stop and do just, well, I don't think they need the flashing beacon warning when the, the intersection is dangerous anymore. After about a year, we could extend the time that we leave them out there if that makes you more comfortable.
Still don't know why. I don't assure you, but support taking them down at all. It's my point. I don't, I don't know that we should remove them once they've been installed. Anyway, we might disagree to this three.
I think we might disagree. Yeah. Yeah. I don't want it to look like we, all of our intersections are dangerous. And that really is what that yellow flashing light or the red flashing light signals to drivers.
It's not what it means to me personally. I think it shows an investment and I, I think that we ought to, to do more of that in my personal opinion. I do think that having 48 two-way paved intersections to me is, is data I've been looking for for quite a while. And of those, I, I'll say this, that if someone misses a stop sign at one of those intersections, the cross traffic is not expecting someone to be in front of them suddenly. Those tend to be, I think, much more likely to see an injury or, or death, a death because of the type of, type of accident that happens there. Not that it can't happen at a four-way, certainly it can, but it does take two people to make a mistake at a four-way intersection to be intersection collision. I mean, one thing we talk, we talk, we teach people is, you know, look both ways before you cross the street type of thing. If someone's coming up, it looks like they're not going to stop. I'm not going to pull in front of them. I'll, I'll verify they're stopping before I pull out. So it does take, I think, maybe an error on the parts of two drivers to have a, the same level of intersection, accident, you might see it at a two-way stop. So to me, those are the ones that have the greater concern. We've seen some deaths, especially in District three, I guess, out west recently, last couple of years. And that, those seem to be that type of intersection where someone didn't even tap the brakes. They blew through the intersection and some unsuspecting driver going the other direction was surprised by someone who just hit them right in the middle of the intersection. And those were very horrible accidents that happened. So to try to mitigate that type of thing from happening, the issue of distracted driving is a, is a big topic to me. And I think that for the amount of investment it would take to do a lot of these mitigations per intersection is pretty low. And I think the savings is certainly worth saving. I think that the lives saved and injuries avoided by this investment is worth the money. So as a CIP project, I would like to see us consider doing more of these types of mitigations that, that enhance the awareness that someone's approaching a intersection where someone's not going to stop. And if you don't, if you don't stop, you can cause an accident or being involved in an accident is going to potentially kill somebody. These are the types of intersections that are, I think, the primarily are the two-way, two-way stops. And by the way, I don't know that I, you know, we, we recently took an intersection out west and turned it from a two-way to a four-way stop that had the, had had the intersection collision warning system installed. Which, what, what was that intersection?
167th and
That was 21st Street and 167th West.
Was that warranted for a four-way?
It became warranted during the ICWS transfer for a four-way.
Okay. Well, then I do support that. But I don't know that I agree with everything that was done there. I do agree that if it was warranted for a four-way, I'm not asking to turn two-way intersections into four-way, to always stops. I'm not asking for that. And I'd like to avoid the idea of, of signalizing and putting roundabouts it all over the counties. I think they're, I think they are cost prohibitive. Average cost being about a million dollars per roundabout or per traffic signal. And I think that you do frustrate the, frustrate the traveling public when you over-control them. I think it frustrates them. But I'm talking about things like, you've already mentioned most of this already. I'll just say this. Pavement marking, great idea. Larger stop signs. And can you correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, but MUTCD calls that for 30-inch stop signs. We've made a decision a long time ago to change every intersection to 36-inch stop signs.
That's correct. On our system, that's correct.
In our system, on our county roads, every stop sign is, it will not be less than 36. If we have a chance to replace these stop signs, it will be a 36 or larger, will not be 30. So again, we made a choice to invest in larger stop signs. If you do the the area of a 30 inch versus the area of a 36, it's substantially more noticeable. Right? We know that some intersections, we've gone to 48. And again, I think these intersections that are the paved intersections going both ways, I would like to see those highlight, those being prioritized for 48-inch stop signs across the county on our paved intersections. Reflection on the, on the vertical poles, I think is a smart idea. I think that's worth the money. The stop ahead sign and the intersection ahead sign for each direction has a warning sign. There's, there's a conflict ahead. You need to be aware. And sort of notice that. The, the red flashing beacons on the stop sign are, I think is worth the money. I would actually maybe go so far as to put some yellow flashing beacons the other way to warn them. You're now at the intersection or you're approaching the intersection. So some yellow flashing beacons in the direction that does not stop. I think we've not tried that. It used to be a long time ago. It was a hanging signal over the intersection. The one direction had flashing red and the other way they had flashing yellow. That was a long time ago. We took all those out. There was one device at the intersection hanging over the center of the intersection. We took all those out. So now we've got, you know, maybe it wasn't such a bad idea. I guess I'll just say this. That's one device that gives you a warning in four directions. I don't think that's a bad thing to have. I think we probably still have them somewhere in storage, I'm guessing. Then I, I'll argue that rumble strips on the leg that, on the leg that stops primarily, rumble strips do something that nothing else does. They give you tactile a response, both in your seat, steering wheel and your pedals. And you can also audibly hear it. So you have several cues to wake up and pay attention. Whereas, and I know people are concerned about the, the rumble strip noise. I can tell you from experience, I go outside those rumble strips, they're not that loud. They are less noticeable and I think people get, do get used to them. I think that if you really want to go the furthest we can go would be rumble strips on the side that stops primarily. And you're warning them if you don't stop, something bad can happen. And I think that that should be a standard for those intersections, almost no cost to do that. Very inexpensive and extremely effective. And then you want to go a little bit further, we could even do illumination, again, solar powered illumination at those intersections would be, I think that's nine things we can do. Now, my opinion is if you did that all in, looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to throw the high number out there, 30,000 per intersection, maybe less. Let's say it's 20,000 per intersection.
All the intersections that lose its impact.
I understand that there's a psychological statement being made here. I will disagree with you on that as well. I understand that if you see it everywhere, you get very used to it. I still think there's, I still think they're effective for most drivers. People realize this is a dangerous intersection or an intersection that could be dangerous and therefore
That we can make these things safer with proper signage.
Again, I think signage alone does not get a hold of the distracted driver. So again, these are all things that can be done. And if you would have done these things, some of these intersections, I think we would have seen some, some injuries and some deaths maybe avoided years ago. Over, so this is an investment. We talk about CIP money being spent for all kinds of things that are really important. Again, this is one of those things where I think collectively as the county, we could invest in doing this and we could, we could get our numbers even better. So that's my personal opinion. Everyone's agree, welcome to disagree with me, but that's what I would do if I was able to do it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Well, if we can do one second, Sheriff's got a hard deadline at 11. I want to get some of his input on this. Sheriff, if you don't mind, maybe some comments or, and then we'll get back to some questions. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning Commissioners, Jeff Easter with the Sheriff's Office. As Lynn has stated before, the new RMS system that we have from two and a half years ago, gives us a lot more data that we're able to extract in a very quick amount of time. So every report that is made is entered into our RMS system through Socrata, not only traffic crash information, but burglary information, homicide information, all of our part one offenses. We can extract that through Socrata and start putting that out to the public where we have burglary or theft issues, those type of things. So it's, it's a very good program and we're happy that, that we're able to share that with Lynn and his crew. From pulling our statistics, our five in the last two and a half years, because the program that we had before, we have to hand-pull that information. So this is only over the last two and a half years. Kellogg from Hundred nineteenth to Hundred sixty-seventh, we've had ninety-eight accidents. Forty-seventh Street and K fifteen, we've had ninety-three. Sixty-third Street and K fifteen, we've had sixty. And Hundred and Forty-third Street and Kellogg, we've had forty-six. And then our fifth highest is Zoo Boulevard from two thirty, two thirty-five, two thirty-five to Ridge is forty-three. So that's Windmill Road. And so the way we categorize them that way, not all of these are intersections, accidents, because a deputy might report it as an address, which is two blocks, one way or the other of the intersection where an accident occurred. And so we're just capturing where we put most of our resources when it comes to traffic control. So when we get grants in from KDOT, we spent a lot of time at Forty-seventh and K fifteen. And over that time, we've reduced at least the traffic fatalities by quite a bit. And so when we spend our time in those areas, those high-traffic accident locations, we do reduce some of the fatalities. Now, we can't be out there twenty-four seven. And so some of the limitations to that is, is that you will have deputies working those high-traffic locations. And then we have the accidents like at Twenty-ninth and Hundred and Thirty-fifth, or we have one way out by Garden Plain at one of those intersections. And so from that standpoint, once we have a fatality, we go out there and we try to do as much traffic enforcement. The difference between being out there in the county, there's usually not parking lots or places to park at to monitor those intersections. And we become a traffic hazard because they're two-lane roads. And so those are a lot harder to monitor in those particular areas. And some of the areas on MacArthur, because those citizens are pretty fed up with the amount of accidents, the amount of speeding, those type of things. They'll grant us access to their driveways that lead out onto MacArthur to do traffic enforcement. So we're very happy that citizens cooperate with us on that. So, but from a standpoint of the, the biggest issues we have, it's the general public. Let's be very honest about this. I believe that what we've done out at Twenty-first and Hundred sixty-seventh has worked. We haven't had any fatalities since that's gone on or since we've put in those four-way stops. I've lived out in that area and we used to have the stoplight with the yellow flashing on Twenty-first. Still had tons of accidents, tons of fatalities out there for years. When we'd finally have gone to the four-way stops, that has absolutely helped. And so I think traffic signaling helps. But don't get me wrong, somebody that's drunk, distracted is going to run that one of these days at the same time that someone's entering the intersection. And so when you look at the statistics from drunk driving to distracted driving, those are the two biggest things that we face. Every time we have an accident and the person's able to fill out because they're not injured critically or deceased, every time we have someone fill out their witness form, that tells us what occurred. And then based on the evidence of the traffic accident, that also gives us the reason to issue traffic citations. And so why we issue traffic citations is to try to alter driver behavior and get them to be compliant. But there's some folks that are never compliant and they get tickets quite often. And so, you know, it's, it's human behavior, unfortunately.
Sheriff, that's helpful. The information particularly off Kellogg, it's a big part of the local console conversation we had at K dot two about the definite needs there. So any questions for Sheriff while we've got him?
Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate you, Sheriff.
Can you get that data for those intersections to someone so we can get that detail, those details, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do it. Yeah. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to Lynn and Tia. Commissioner Wise had a few questions.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and all the data. You know your job and I trust you and I think you've done a great job. And I think the challenge that I have in District Three is very apparent, where we have rural roads that are becoming commuter roads. And people kind of creating a maze through the dirt roads to get to all of the shopping up at New Market Square and other areas. So you talked about steps in growth and how you anticipate that growth, which I appreciate. And I think that we're moving through some of those steps in my areas. But do you, we talked a lot about human behavior with you and with Sheriff. How do you guys track those commuter behaviors as people are choosing to use? We're going to use Hundred and Thirty-fifth as an example. People use Hundred and Thirty-fifth instead of Hundred and Nineteenth because it's light after light after light after light, right? And it's increasing traffic, it's increasing accidents. So do you have a data point where you pull just the human behavior change and pattern change as far as what path they're taking to, to go shopping or whether it's sports or whatever?
So we don't have a tool that actually says, you know, fifty percent of these vehicles were going to New Market Square off of Twenty-first Street back in twenty twenty, but now it's seventy-five percent are using Twenty-first Street. But as Tia talked about, we do go out and get our traffic counts every two years. So every two years, we're getting an update on the volume of the traffic, the speed of the traffic, the direction of the traffic. And we're using that data to look at where traffic's going, where they're turning at. That helps. We also can get that data as well. Hey, you know, more traffic's turning off at Hundred and Thirty-fifth now than it was before. We can, we can glean some of that information, but nothing directly that says these cars are now using Hundred and Nineteenth instead of Hundred and Thirty-fifth, for example.
The inconvenience of the signals on Hundred Nineteenth. So you're absolutely right. I think people are trying to skirt around the fringes of the cities to avoid.
Unrighted weren't really intended for that, you know, and I think that's where I'm pushing up against what your rules and your data say, just on the, the constituent side of what I'm hearing and experiencing as well. And I, Lynn, you live in the area too, you see it, you know it. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But how do we approach that? And, you know, I know we know, we follow the platted developments and we look to see that they're actually occurring. But I just wonder if we, we know it's coming, we see the traffic increase. And I don't know the last time you did maybe the analysis on that. I know you did kind of out of turn. So if you're waiting another six months, two years or whatever, the cycle would be at that intersection. But that's a highlight and I, I love that you said that it's happening, a change is happening soon and I don't know.
Yeah, we did some analysis early this year along Hundred Thirty-fifth. And I do think, yeah, Lynn is bringing an always stop, I think, aren't you? Next week?
Next week. Okay.
Okay. The resolution comes through next week. So we have the analysis. We may be a little slow to get it to you sometimes. There are a lot of factors at play. You know, the, the question of annexation is always open when you get that close to the city's fringe.
Yeah.
And, you know, they do a lot of things, frankly, on our roads sometimes. They, they'll start capital projects and they'll be in our jurisdiction still. So we're, we're, that's a battle that we're fighting. And I don't know the answers to Commissioner Wise. I really don't.
Yeah, you're doing a good job. And one thing that I was going to ask for is you had mentioned the updated, where are my notes here? An analysis that had been done and it was twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Is that something you guys can share with us? I don't know that I've ever seen that before.
That's our local road safety plan and that was shared with all Commissioners back in twenty twenty-three and we can certainly get you.
That's why I don't have it, I suppose. Okay. Yeah.
I, one question I do have is, and this is just in the, the thought process of timing. If you look at the future traffic, traffic interventions, these are intersections, there's eight of them that kind of fit the criteria and we know something is coming. We know that the urban growth, the traffic, all of this is going to suggest some sort of intervention coming at some point in time. What's the calculus on working ahead? Some of it is the engineering piece of it, the data piece of it, is the data suggests X. When this happens, this happens. The other piece of it is, for lack of a better term, the political perception is that the community, in some instances, actually want us to work ahead. Knowing what's coming into the future, just doing something ahead of time. What is the, what is the angst against working ahead? Not on all of these intersections, but on some of these intersections, knowing that a future intervention is coming. Is, is it a capital? If it's a capital or a cost thing, those are things that five of us might want to have a discussion of.
Sure. There's not one answer to that. Definitely funding is, is there. I've told you guys for years, I need more money in my CIP. If you want me to pave the roads you want paved, you want me to put the intersections signalized, we, I need straight out more money.
So can I ask Lynn, and this is a strange way to ask this question, if we could get you the money, could we work ahead?
Now, that's where we're going to caution and that's the other portion of this. Yes, we can. But we want to do so very carefully and we want to make sure we're doing it in line with driver expectations. Because one of the things that I'll use Hundred sixty-seventh and Twenty-first is a very good example. When you have an intersection out in the county that's wide open, like a lot of them ours, and if you're approaching it and you see a stop sign, but you don't see any conflicting traffic and you're out in the rural part of the county.
I know.
We are, we have data to show it. You don't stop. And that's what Sheriff was talking about. That's what Tia was talking about. That's what I was talking about. We have the ninth worst ranked state in the nation for driver behaviors. And I would probably say Cedro County is up there in the top in Kansas. We just work, we have an issue where we have our, as Commissioner Wise was noting, we have our rural coming up onto our urban, where we have a growing suburban area. People grew up driving Hundred sixty-seventh and Twenty-first like Sheriff Easter that knew it in and out. That's how they'd always done it. And as soon as we started changing things, they were like, I'm not going to stop. It's two in the afternoon. I know no one's coming. I can see for a mile in every direction. Why am I going to stop? So when you start putting up traffic controls that aren't there for them, that are not needed for the majority of the day, people recognize that and blow through or do the California Slow World Stop or whatever. And that's where we end up with more crashes, because everyone has already, you've seen it. It's, it's said all the time. We get in the traffic reports all the time. I didn't see that car coming. I stopped, but I didn't see their car coming. Well, there was, how could you not see that expedition, black expedition going down at two in the afternoon that was driving at fifty, you know, fifty-five miles an hour with no hindrance in sight anywhere?
Yeah.
You know, people are used to seeing, they saw it and they didn't recognize it in their head. Because they just assumed that nothing was going to be coming.
Yeah, I think the driver expectations for someone who isn't a traffic engineer, it's hard for me to calculate that and to rationalize driver expectations. But I know it's true. I live out, I live in Drive Country Roads, that's where I live. So I, I understand that. I guess the biggest question on my end is if we, knowing what's coming, knowing the glide path, knowing at some point, when is that decision made that we can aggressively work ahead?
Here, here's the other issue. We also try to be very, we try to be strategic about it as well. Ninety-fifth and Rock is a good example. We went out there and signaledized that today. That would be one hundred percent born cost by Cedro County. And we would have to assume what the traffic is going to need in the future by putting in turn lanes. Is it one turn lane? Is it two turn lanes? Is it a double turn lane? Whereas if we do that in the future, we can work with the developer in the city of Derby and only pay a portion of that cost. And we don't have to make as many assumptions about what that future traffic is going to be.
You know, Lynn, and this is not my district, so forgive me, Commissioner. I'm just asking, like Ninety-fifth and Rock, has Derby weighed in? Do we know if they have interest in?
Yes, we, we, we've been talking to them about that intersection for a few years now. They have a developer. In fact, one of the reasons why we learned that the development isn't going to happen when it's going to happen is because Derby gave us the heads up, the developer has lost interest currently in that area and is concentrating more up by Fifty-fifth and Rock.
Oh, I appreciate, I know you do have great relationships with our cities and I appreciate that a lot. I would just say to my colleagues that I know if you have an intersection, you know your districts better than I know your districts. As one vote and as one seat, if there are intersections that you have concerns and working with our traffic engineer and our county engineer, I will happily support what I think you need or what you say you need in your district for safety, that I will be a vote of trying to support the things that you guys need. So in a support, try to get you the resources you need to do these things and working ahead. So, okay. Please, yeah. Go ahead, Tia.
Things are pretty good. And as a Commissioner, if you get a call about something feeling unsafe, pass it along.
Thank you. Yeah.
Really, it takes no skin off of our backs to do an analysis. And, and I think drivers know what, know what they're, they're driving up to.
They do, Tia. And if you look at the mentions and the tags of my name on Facebook, you would notice that they have reached out quite a bit. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this piece here? What, what next steps, Lynn? What are the next steps? This is a helpful presentation. What, what are the next steps that we should expect here? I know there's something coming at Twenty-ninth and Hundred Thirty-fifth. A resolution that the B O C C will take into account next week. Outside of that.
Our next steps right now is to do exactly what Tia presented on. We have intersections we're looking at. Next year is twenty twenty-six, which is a traffic count year for us. So that automatically has us going through and, and reapplying data to all those intersections we're looking at. For us, one of the biggest next steps is next week, we will get training on the Socrata software. That's going to allow us to get in there and hopefully be a little more preemptive in some of the things and looking at where growth's occurring and where accidents are occurring before they get to bigger crashes.
That's a great tool, Lynn. Okay. Tia, thank you for being here. I appreciate your insight and all the data. So Commissioner.
Just one more thought here. Again, one of the things that might help Ninety-fifth and Rock Road would be some left-hand turn lanes for the east-west legs. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting we go to, from current configuration to an always stop. To me, that's another, that's another bigger step, if you will. The turn lanes will cost some money, obviously. Always stop is probably less expensive, but I mean, some turn lanes would alleviate people from behind that person feeling pressured to cross. Or should you say that someone wants to turn towards Wichita, say they're going westbound on Ninety-fifth, they want to turn towards Wichita, go towards work in the morning. But there's someone that's trying to cross full lanes of traffic and they don't feel safe yet. So that person sitting behind them, sitting there waiting to turn, they can't turn. So it's impeding traffic there. So, you know, turn lanes, right-hand and even actually left-hand and right-hand turn lanes on Ninety-fifth Street would really alleviate some of that. But that's a larger investment, I suppose. That's improving the intersection itself. We don't actually have that at Fifty-fifth Street either.
That will be coming with Fifty-fifth Street Derby as a project in the Wampo Pipeline. That is in the next two years. Is that correct? Within the next two years is reconstructing from Fifty-fifth down to Sixty-third. And my understanding is that will include turn lanes at Fifty-fifth and Rock.
Right. So back to Ninety-fifth and Rock again. So you, you mentioned that when, when it meets warrants, the next step is to do it to always stop. But there's been no discussion about changing the, the, the lanes in terms of making it more, you know, easily to get around that intersection.
That is something we also look at. I will say that, as I noted earlier, you know, doing something like that, that now would be a little preemptive or premature, I should say, just because right now, two things, it hasn't been warranted to do something like that based on the limited times that we do have that kind of traffic that's out there. It's, it's, it's very limited in the time of days that we have two short half-hour sections. But also in addition to that, we have an opportunity to have that cost covered by developers in the near future. So again, we're just, we do try to be strategic with our spending.
Let me just, let me just say one other thing here. The Sheriff's data was, I may have said this, but I missed it. So I'll just say it out loud. I'm looking at the email. The data he presented was from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. So it's about two and a half years of data. And so some of these intersections like Forty-seventh and K fifteen and Forty-seventh and K fifteen and Clifton had ninety-three reportable accidents. Now, these ninety-three, I assume that means that they were injured or worse because.
I assume.
Okay. So we're talking, there may have been other offenders that are not part of this data here.
If it was reported to the police in any way, they have a record of it. The Socrata pools data, as I understand it, getting the training next week. But in what we've been talked to about so far. But in what we've been talked to about so far is, it's pulling data from the state. So, and in particular, KHP will report the majority to those intersections, because that's a state-controlled intersection. So they will enter their data, it'll go up to state, and we're able to pull that data. One of the things, and I know that because one of the options we have in the data we get is what agency reported those crashes.
So one other thing I just, I guess I'd ask is, was we look at this data, the, you said in, you said in 2020, let me go back here. Where's the fatality data, fatality data is on which slide? Yeah, okay, it is that same slide, 2020 Cedric County ranked fifth safest county in Cedric, I'm sure in Kansas, behind Johnson, Butler, Riley, and Shawnee County. It says motor vehicle crash, crashes were 65 deaths. What, was that Cedric County, 65 deaths? Including which?
That's all of the county, cities inclusive.
So how many of that 65 were unincorporated? Find that out this time. I'd like to find that out, and I could break it down even further. What was the type of intersection? What was the, if it was intersection accident, what type of intersection was it? Can we please break that down?
We could look into that, I don't know if we can get an exact number, but we just recently received from Sergeant Monroe, some of the ILEADS, one of the issues that the sheriff was alluding to and then noted, was the Socrata system and the current system they have is April 23 on. They still have old reports from ILEADS, the old system, and they've given us back to, I, I don't know if it's all of 2020, at least a portion of 2020, that we can, we can go through those records and see how many are.
I know it's a lot more work to do this, but it'd be interesting to have the same data for, for injury, you know, someone who was transported, injury type of accident, because I'm sure that'd be a much higher number. So to have that data to know how many, how many injury or fatality accidents happened in the unincorporated, but what was the type of intersection that was related to that accident? If it was a two-way or four-way or, you know, a township, you know, unmarked intersection or whatever it was, it'd be nice to know that data. I, I'll say this, if, I know people think I'm crazy here, but if we did invest, let's say $25,000 per intersection, for all 48 of those types of intersections, still talking just a more than, a little bit more than a million dollars for the entire county. To me, this is, this is an investment, will it have a direct impact on saving lives and, and reducing, reducing injuries? Without question. This is a financial decision. So I would just say, as a county commissioner, I want to be on, I want to be on record, I want to be clear. I stand for this, this is an investment, and the lives and, and safety of our, of our people, it's a small amount of money relatively speaking. So I'm asking once again, rather than dismiss this and just go on and do business as usual, let's elevate this decision a little higher, please. I've been talking about this now for most of a decade. I brought it up during the budgets, Adoption Day, and I, I felt like I got a pretty negative response from my colleagues, if you will. It is time for us to elevate this up, and I appreciate your science and your objectivity. This is a little bit political, I, I have to say, I know there's pressure from people to do something. This is what I think they're, they're looking for, they want to see this type of investment.
And I respect that.
I would argue, I think, I would deem these intersections would be much safer if we didn't, if we installed most of these nine things at every intersection at that time. You would see a direct impact and reductions of people's death and injury. So to me, this is worth the money.
And with all due respect, Commissioner, I'm worried about every intersection in the county, not just those 48. And if we do that, I, I can't support doing that to those 48 intersections, as you talked about, because we're going to make our other intersections less safe than they are now. We're going to encourage people to disobey the signs that are in place, because we're going to place them, whether they're necessary or not. And for that reason, I can't support such actions. It would literally be a waste of money and create a greater safety hazard countywide.
Well, it's interesting you say that, you know, I'll just reflect on, how many times since I've been here, we had a fatality accident, or, or maybe even double fatality accident, where we've responded by adding some of these things. That has been reactionary, you know, I'll just point out, you know, Butler County lost two people at, I don't know, the intersection is happening, Santa Fe Lake Road and 47th Street South, it, for, as a Cedric County reference point. They installed rumble strips and some of these mitigations within a week after that intersection, after that, after the accident. The community praised them, I would tell you that that, and their, their rumble strips were ground into the asphalt, so it's a different way of doing it. My, my opinion, my opinion, a much better way of doing that. That was an investment, we, we reacted at 71st Street, I think it was 71st and 135th Street West, putting all kinds of mitigations, we had a pretty bad accident at intersection, we did all these things at that point. We did some things in District Three with the, the intersection collision warning system, if you will, as well as in changing to a fullway stop later. That was an investment, if you will, because the intersection, but data-wise was, was an outlier, it looked really bad. We are, we are reacting to situations as they happen, and then we get criticized for being slow, slow to doing something. I, I'm talking about being a little bit more proactive, I understand the psychology that you're talking about, if you do this everywhere, people don't notice it. I, again, I will respectfully disagree with you on this, I think that that's a psychological, that's a, it's a theory, if you will. I don't know how you test that exactly, but I would tell you, if I ask someone in the community, you think it's safer having an intersection with these mitigations in place versus not having these? Would you, would you think it's worth the, the amount of money we invest in this? And again, countywide, we're going to have some, some definite improvement in, in reductions in fatalities and injuries. Is this worth my, I think you're going to see a very, very, very large support from our people that elect us to this position. So again, I understand from an engineer's perspective, from an objective perspective, you may not think this is following the manual. I think from a leader's perspective, and my, as I sit here, this is definitely worth the money. And it's something that people want us to do, so I'm willing to have this battle. We're going to have to respectfully disagree with each other on this. I'm going to be on the side of saying this is worth the money, and I think we should do something more than we're doing today.
Okay, we'll continue this conversation, Lynn, Tia, thank you, this is a lot of work, I do think there's good progress being made, and some of the data you're going to be receiving and presenting. I, I want to get into a more regular discussion, maybe, Tia, having you over, and Flynn, to commissioners and talk through some of these things. So I, I think it's helpful, I think it's really helpful, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, second thing on the agenda today, Tom, if you'd like to set us up a little bit about what we're going to already talk about, and then we'll have Fire Chief Doug Williams coming.
Chief, go ahead and hit the podium. We, we all received a letter from the Fire Advisory Board, and a member of the board is here today to, to speak with us also. There's some fairly significant issues inside the request of, of what the Steering Council is asking for. I thought it would be good to publicly discuss that today, have the chief go over that, and actually have a board representative come up and maybe talk to the commission.
That'd be great, yeah. Chief? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief. And we have Chairperson of the Steering Council, Katie Tindell, here with us today, and she, she can speak to the Steering Council opinion. I mean, I can speak to my impression of their opinion, but she can directly speak to that, and I welcome whether she wants to lead off or let me go first, it's up to her.
Yeah, why don't we, Katie, would you be willing to come up and, yeah?
I was going to defer to me. I can definitely.
Well, Katie, we appreciate Katie being here, and for the reference to the public, Tom mentioned it, but we received a resolution from the Steering Council, it's an advisory board for Fire District One, with some recommendations that they're asking us to look at for operations and such in, in the fire districts. So Chief and Katie, you're welcome to.
Okay.
Go as you will.
Yeah, I want to start out, and I want to speak a little bit about the Fire District Steering Council. I know I spoke about this a few months ago when we had the, the staff meeting about advisory boards and committees that serve the entire county as a whole, and we talked a little bit about the Steering Council. But one thing that is very important to me, because they have a different perspective than county commissioners do on, on the fire district, because every single member of the Steering Council lives in the fire district, they pay taxes in the fire district, and they need the fire truck to be in their city when something happens. And that's a different perspective than somebody that maybe lives in the city of Wichita, and if the Park City truck goes in outside its jurisdiction, it doesn't affect them quite as much as it does. You know, I think one of our Steering Council members said it point blank, you know, if my fire truck goes out there, then we're, who's going to respond to my home? And that is a fair question, and that's kind of the question that's put us where we're at. And also, something that I, I think is of note is, one of our Steering Council members had a family member that coded, code blue, and our station was responded and got them back, and that member is healthy and living today because of the response of our firefighters and the assistance of EMS. And I would have hated to explain to that person on our Steering Council why our fire truck was off in a, off in some township or jurisdictions far out in the area that has chosen not to be in the fire district. So these Steering Council members, they, they definitely are all in, and, and it is very important to them what the fire district does and how it's funded. We started looking at, at these agreements, and we came across some real, some issues that we hadn't seen in the past, and we hadn't really taken into consideration in the past. And one of the things we came across was response numbers, whether they're tilted and whether they're mutually beneficial. A mutual aid agreement is exactly what it says, it's supposed to be mutual aid, and that can be several different ways. Mutual aid can be, okay, you help us, we help you, and it's kind of an equal balance. Or it can be, we help you, and we help you a little more than you help us, but because of where your station's located, you're a great benefit to us by us not having to put a fire truck there. I mean, there's, there's financial offsets as well as operational offsets when you talk about these aid agreements. And, you know, and I think that was where we're seeing deficiencies with some of these aid agreements, is we're seeing some of them that are one-sided, and some of them, we haven't had a response from that agency for us for two years. But yet, we've responded to calls out in there. I've been contacted with Justin and Kirk in legal. We have some of these cities that have contract agreements to respond into townships, but our agreement is only to respond into the city, but they're continually asking us to run the calls out in the township for them. And that's totally outside of the mutual aid agreement. And according to, I'm not going to, Justin can speak to legal, but there are some concerns with that from a legal standpoint, that we're operating outside of our agreement, and whether or not those cities should be bringing us out into townships when we don't have an agreement with the township. So, you know, when we came into this, we just want to have an honest conversation, we want the cities, and, you know, this went viral quicker, we, we had a planning session scheduled for last week to how we wanted to reach out to the cities and talk about this. It got out there a little quicker than we wanted, and so we're kind of reactionary on some of this, and we're having to explain where we're coming from. But really, truly, the Steering Council, and Katie can speak to that, is they want us to engage with these cities and try to build a bigger, better response that's not, is financially responsible for us and the cities and townships, operationally efficient, and provides better ISO benefit, better training, better operational safety for our personnel. And that was what the goal of this was. And I go back to, we just want to have honest conversations. Commissioner Howell challenged us, you know, four or five years ago to do a study on a countywide fire system, and we did that, and we reached out to a lot of these cities, and I will tell you, some of these cities refuse to provide us any information. And so there's where we're saying, hey, just sit down and talk to us, let's, let's, let's lay it on the table and let's talk. And I know that information got out there, and there's probably some of these city managers or, or mayors maybe were watching what we have to say. But I, I think it's fair, because I wouldn't have brought this up had the information not gotten out. But, you know, I'm not coming here with the intent of beating up a volunteer fire department. You know, I can show you, I brought the plaques, I've got 37 years of service with the volunteer fire department in a rural county. You know, I started with the volunteer department, I worked for, oh my God, H says in front of Beatty, but I worked for KUFST, KU Fire Service Training for years, teaching volunteer firefighters. So my goal isn't to sit here and beat up volunteer firemen, that's not our goal at all. Our goal is to look at what's going on and address where we see deficiencies and, and problems with, you know, lack of volunteer turnout, that would be the way I would put it. But there's also what we call, and, and we work with, we call the fallacy of roster. And when I talk about the fallacy of roster, you can lay a roster on the table and you can show me a roster. But if those firefighters aren't showing up on your fire scene, your roster's worthless. And that's, you know, the, that's what I want to engage with and have a conversation is, you know, when I work with volunteer departments and consulted with volunteer departments, you know, we always talked about that. You know, we want to see what's on the scene, what's showing up, you know, it, it's, it's not any good if you have 20 volunteers, but only three show up. So we want to have those conversations, and we want to have them in a real, fair, and honest way. We're not picking on anybody. The low turnout of volunteers isn't just here. I was talking to a fire chief in the northeast part of the state just last weekend, and he said they're dealing with it too, with their career department, because their neighboring departments are struggling to, to get volunteers to turn out. One of the biggest problems is the medicals, medical calls, well, no EMS facing it, all the career departments are facing it, medical calls are going up. And, you know, one of the things too, we're talking about legal, none of our aid agreements address medical calls. But we're increasingly being called out to these townships that we have no agreement with, these cities have agreements with them. You know, some of them get paid a hundred thousand a year for these agreements. And then we're getting called out to run their medical call because they don't have anybody available. And, and like I say, back to the legal issue, that's totally not even in our agreement. We're running them, we don't want to leave people stranded, but we think that we need to have a discussion on why we're doing that. So that's really pretty much the nuts and shells of what I had to say. I, I think that if we sit down, we have an opportunity, we're not, this is not a hostile takeover. We want to have the opportunity, you know, to plan for the future, maybe we can work with these departments. If they don't come in, if they do come in, we can have conversations about how we staff those areas, where we don't staff them, or what agreements look like. And, and like I said, I think it's fair to say that we need to address all those agreements. And, and I think in the end, I had this in my first, part of my note, and I forgot to say it, we're not talking about Mulvane, we're not talking about Derby, we're not talking about Wichita, or any of the Butler County departments. We're just mainly talking about the small cities within Sedgwick County that were having these operational loss of calls and operating outside of agreements.
That's good, Chief, appreciate it. Okay, Katie, I'm going to invite you up to provide some comment from the Steering Council. For some reference, there are, Chief, there are 13 or 14 cities that were contracted with the fire district, pay fire district taxes. There's an improvement district, maybe two, you know, talking about City of Mandale, Bentley, Mays, Park City, Kechai. But for the public that might be listening in and understanding, and including all the unincorporated parts of the county, that we have individual cities and some township and, and the unincorporated parts of our county that pay a specific property tax. In 2025, was 17 mills of property tax for fire district services, for professional fire services. And the, the rub that has begun here, and some of this tension is that there are other cities in Sedgwick County that are not paying that, but we have aid agreements, many of these auto aid agreements. So it's creating some tension in, in many ways, which this resolution, Katie, addresses. So I wanted the public to understand, some people don't fully understand how the fire district works and the taxing jurisdictions that make up the fire district. So Katie, you sent a resolution on behalf of the Steering Council, interested in your insight.
Yeah, well, you guys said a lot there, so I don't know how much more I can add to that. But for those of you that don't know me, I'm Katie Tindell, I'm the current Chair of the Fire District Steering Council. Like Chief said, these conversations started a couple meetings back about consolidating the fire district, and culminated in a meeting with the, with the fire, the fire district staff meeting, I guess, was back in September. And where we heard directly from Division Chiefs about the risks involved when you're sending professional firefighters into some of these scenes where the volunteer firefighters don't show up. So we talked about it there, Commissioner Beatty, you were at that meeting, as well as you, Commissioner Wise. And from there, I took that back, that information back to the Steering Council, we had additional discussions, and I drafted this resolution. I think the resolution speaks for itself, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have. But really, my thought process was, again, in addition to, we've got a situation where there are folks that are receiving the benefit of the fire district services without paying taxes. And again, we're, we're thinking about protecting our firefighters that are going on scene in some of these areas. So those, those two factors. So those, um, those two factors, um, I think combined with the fact that these mutual aid agreements and auto aid agreements haven't been reviewed in a long time. So this resolution was really a way to bring that to the forefront and like Chief said, have the conversation. Now, I'll admit that when I drafted this resolution, it maybe wasn't drafted in a way where those conversations were viewed as preliminary because it really was throwing the support of the, the steering council behind consolidation. I guess I relied on my fellow committee members to temper that language a bit and that didn't happen. So this is what ended up passing with a quorum at our last meeting. But I say that only to say, Chief and I have had discussions that we know full well that, you know, once the conversations are had, once the information's out there, once the data is collected, we may not end up with full consolidation, right? But I think the important part right now is to jumpstart those conversations so that we can hopefully produce more efficiencies, better services for the, for the folks in the fire district and outside the fire district right now, right? Bring them in so that they're receiving better services too. So, uh, like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have about the resolution, but that's really how it came about. And, um, I know that, uh, from the steering committee's perspective, they were excited about starting these conversations and thinking that it needed to happen soon, so.
For the public's knowledge and the resolution talks a lot about taxing inequalities. So I'm at, if you, I live in Mays or May citizens that are paying property taxes for the fire district, but the fire district and Sedgwick County Fire is going to other communities that are not paying these and fighting fires, answering medical calls. So one of the big components here was the taxing inequality here. The second was the safety inequality, showing up to scenes with volunteer departments. And they, they may have a roster of 20 plus, but only a couple firefighters are showing up. And some of these individuals were not able to meet the needs of the fire. And so our fire department was taking command without full arsenal and capacity available. So that's two of, a few of the things mentioned, but there's some questions here from the commission. So Commissioner move on.
Real quick, real quickly, just to add on to that, and I know the, the Chief spoke to this a little bit, but I grew up in a rural area where we had a volunteer fire department. And I know that, um, they play a very important part in these, in these cities. So like he said, this is not, you know, coming in and disparaging those volunteer fire departments. But when you have an instance where, or we're now several instances, right? Where, um, they're not sort of pulling their weight, right? I think Chief can give examples of when he was on the volunteer fire department. They only asked for outside help once, twice, right? In how many years? 26 years. So, uh, but I, I don't think that's the situation we're facing anymore. And again, maybe some of these conversations will bring that to light, that, you know, the, that there has to be more of an equality or equitability across both lines.
Thank you for that. Commissioner move on.
Hey, thank you very much for your explanation. What discussions are you guys having with these cities or these volunteer fire departments?
We, we meet with quarterly with, with these, we have quarterly fire chiefs meeting in Sedgwick County where we discuss different issues and stuff and, and things. And, and like I said, this issue came up and, and we've talked with a few of them about it, but like I said, we intended to have this conversation before this went public and it, it didn't work that way. So, so we intend to have that conversation with these volunteers.
Because I've, I've been hearing from a couple of them and I think they're kind of excited, you know, because, because no one's reached out and talked to them. Have, have we done any kind of financial modeling as to what this might look like if we did make this change?
We've worked on that. We have worked on that and, and some of the challenges we get into is, um, you know, and, and I know Lindsay and Brent Shelton with finance have worked up some stuff for, and that was in some of the conversations we had with Chairman Beatty and Commissioner Wise last week. But some of the problems, and we got into this when we did the, what we called the Howl study, that Commissioner Howell requested us to do four years ago. You know, many of these cities that have paid firefighters and some do, you know, and paid staff, you know, they, they may pay them out of the park department or they, or they may pay them with salaries. And then when we look at their annual budget, their payment for their fire trucks not coming out of their annual budget. And you have to go try to find that, their, their payment for their fire staff. It may be their salaries, but their benefits are hidden somewhere else. I'm not sure it's hidden or, or paid out of a benefit fund or, you know, like us, when we talk with finance and when we talk with, if we make any requests for personnel, you know, we have to add the salary that that person comes in at. Plus we have to add a 35% upcharge to cover KPNF retirement. You know, the FICA payment and everything that comes out of the employer. I mean, right now KPNF is 23% from the fire district. And so we know that when we see a, a fire department that shows a operational budget with, with, and we know how many people they have. And we see how, what their number of payment is, we know they're not calculating 23% KPNF and all those other things out of those factors. And, and as I said, when we've asked for that information, when we did the study for Commissioner Howell years ago, some of those cities were not willing to give us, you know, those informations. So, so even though we do the modeling, it's, it's a challenge because, you know, some of the cities, we're very clear, we're fire district, we're standalone, we cost what we cost. But some of these cities, like I say, they pay for their, their cost of their stations or their cost of their fire trucks or, or SCBA's or radios, they pay for them out of a capital outlay or other fund that, and it, and it's hard to track all that. And to really get a solid forecast and, and that's what we're talking about. And when we say we just want to have conversations.
And these volunteers, normally their compensation maybe exists to maybe a life insurance policy or something like that. Is that, is there anything else?
Well, I can't speak for all of them, but a lot of volunteer, the volunteer departments I worked with, they got a stipend. If you went to a fire call, you got, you know, X dollars.
Okay.
And, and generally if you go to a training session, you get X dollars, whether it's $15, $25, whatever they choose. They generally pay a stipend that comes out, you know? And, and a lot of the cities probably have a part-time fee for what they pay the fire chief. And we don't know what that is, we don't.
Okay, all right, thanks. Good questions. Okay, other questions? Commissioner How.
Couple of things, I, I don't know about townships, how this works, but cities certainly have a, a city home rule authority. So if they decide they want to come in, this is really a a decision they have to be essentially lured in. Please speak to that.
Certainly Commissioner Howell, Justin Waggoner, County Counselor. You're correct that if a city were to come into the fire district, there's a process to which that can happen. There's also a process that's generalized based on a petition process where people in the unincorporated area can, can seek to be admitted into the fire district as well. So there are options where folks can do that. As has been noted, if a property is not in the fire district, then obviously they're not paying fire district taxes. It also means that absent any agreement, there's not a legal obligation on the fire district to provide services. But I think part of what we're talking about today is these mutual aid agreements, automatic aid agreements where there may be a, we may have contracted ourselves to provide some sort of response in those areas, even if they're not part of the fire district.
These six townships, they have a contract with the nearby city that's providing them?
Yes.
Okay. And again, so do we have, do we have data we have collected regarding our responses out to these areas to show our, I guess, our response times and that type of thing?
I don't have the, I don't have the response time data, I have the response numbers.
What's the difference, numbers versus data? You just said two things.
I don't, I don't have the time, I can't tell you. You asked for time or, oh, you said time, so I apologize.
How many times were you talking? How many times were you?
I apologize. Yes, we have the run numbers.
Okay. And then while we're on the scene, I guess, do we ever like, you know, anecdotally at least write down somehow collected the data on what the response of the nearby volunteer, volunteer department is? Do we know anything at all about their response?
Sometimes, sometimes it's hit or miss. I mean, if they have two volunteers show up, that's pretty easy to collect that data. If they have 10 or 15 show up, then obviously we, you know, it's not an issue.
And do we have data about them showing up to, uh, fire district, our fire district, them showing up to, to provide mutual aid to our
Yes.
responsibly responsible, we have that too?
Yes.
Yeah, on the, I was going to ask about fiscal note, but thank you, thanks for handing this out a minute ago. It says current estimated mill levy. Do you know where that data came from? Current in the middle of the.
Finance created that.
This, so this is, uh, us looking at the city's budget, trying to figure out how much money they spend on fire and calculating an equivalent mill levy?
I believe so.
So the, the, the theory is if we were to bring them in, if we did the exact same response we do today, we can lower our mill levy from 16.750 down to 14.481?
That was the number that the finance came up with, yes.
And these other cities that are currently at 12, 11 and 12 mill levy, I mean, for them, it's probably an increase of a, a couple of mil. But they would have, then we'd at least have a contract saying we, we're doing what we're contracted to do.
Correct.
Right? And their ISO ratings would theoretically be reflective of that.
Yes, it would affect their ISO ratings. Our cities, Mays, Park City, Goddard, all, all of our cities with hydrant systems have a class two rating.
Does the petition for them to come into the fire district, does that have to be done citizen-led or is it can be? Do we have any option of initiating that petition?
I would, I would let Justin speak to the cities, but in the county, like Union Township, an individual property owner, not within Colwich, but an individual property owner in Union Township and Morton Township. We have some of those can petition into the fire district and then they get programmed into CAD as, as part of our jurisdiction. And, um, currently we have, I believe, 140 properties in Union Township that have individually petitioned in.
Well, and Commissioner How, to your question, uh, the county can't, or the fire district can essentially unilaterally add people into the fire district. So, uh, whether it be a city that would, would decide to become part of the fire district that's not already part of the fire district or a property in the unincorporated area that may decide to petition in, as Chief Williams was talking about. Those are, you know, those are not necessarily at the sole insistence of the fire district. That answers your question.
I'm not interested in, in the individual properties, like we see Clearwater doing this. I'd rather see a township making a township decision, you know, as a jurisdiction, if you will. So there are six townships and five cities shown here. Jurisdictionally, if we were to bring those five cities and some of those six townships in as a block, if you will.
Yeah. And Commissioner Howell, my, my first off, I'm going to look to Kirk's sponsor. My recollection is that if it's land in the unincorporated area, you have to have a certain portion of those taxpayers petition in. Um, I don't believe townships can just automatically add themselves in, but I'll look to Kirk to see if I got any of that wrong or maybe correcting.
I do want to add one thing, Commissioner, because I, I think it's fair to say that some of these areas, you know, you talk about going down to 14, the 14 number. But you, we also have to recognize some of these areas, we are going to have to boost service. So, I mean, there is going to be operational cost to, for fire trucks and personnel to, to cover areas. You know, so it's not a clear, we're going to save this much money, but, you know, we were going to have to do it, come back with a study and, and tell you, okay, we have to, you know, add a fire station here, we have to put people out there to, to accomplish this. So I, I wanted to weigh in, it's not as completely clear, there would be some operational cost with, um, you know, with taking in these areas.
Good morning, Kirk Sponson, Deputy County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, to your question about the, the block of, of area or territory, there are, is specific allowance in the statutes for cities to do that, to go through their governing bodies and maybe approve in that way, but I've not found similar language for townships. So as Justin alluded to, the process for individual or blocks would be pursuant to 193604B, wherein it's 10% of the designated area, there have to be petitions from 10% of the property owners of that area. So a township may, could potentially arguably start a petition and send them out to people within the community and say, hey, we're looking at doing this for the entirety of the township, things of that nature. But they would be the ones who'd be running point on this, collecting the petitions, things of that nature. It would then later be brought to the BOCC, but no, we, we can't jumpstart the process.
Does it go into a ballot at some point?
Uh, I, I don't believe so. Let me re-review it, but I don't believe so, Commissioner.
Can we put it on the ballot for these areas? I mean, if we could do that, I mean, that'd be a way for us to add that to a ballot because again, I don't, organically, I don't see anybody in that community necessarily rising up to go collect signatures of people who live, you know.
Commissioner Howell, preliminarily, I'll say that I don't believe we can, uh, put that on a ballot. I think that's covered by a specific set of statutes for fire districts. It is a good question, but I don't believe we have any authority to do that. Also, townships don't have home rule power. So if there's not statutory authority, as Kirk was noting, unlike counties and cities, town, townships do not have home rule powers. So they wouldn't have an authority to just ask to do that unless the legislature would give them some authority in the future.
But somehow the entire township got it, uh, removed from the fire, our fire district. How did that happen?
That's a, that's a good observation and I can't tell you that I know for sure. And I'd have to check with the clerk's office, they may have never been part of the fire district to begin with. I, I remember once upon a time I looked at when the fire district were first created and you could see chunks of land that were added through the petition process that Kirk's already described. And some of those townships may have never actually added their land. But I'd have to go back and check that on a case by case.
So, so there's similar analysis within that about a protest being filed in, in regards to the inclusion or exclusion of the land within the fire district.
Maybe this is a, maybe this is a dumb idea, but I, maybe legislatively there ought to be a way for us to put this on the ballot. You know, maybe legislative platform would say, ask the people through a ballot measure, they want to be in the fire district. I think, I think that would be a much easier way for us to get the will of the people. And I think there should be a way for the, the statutes to allow for that to happen.
Apparently though, I mean, if we go to these cities and they're on board, I mean, that you've got your, presumably the city council voting as the elected representatives of more than 10% of the population of these townships, right? That gets you where you would need to be for the petition, if that makes sense.
I, I agree, the city has a path right now, if the city was to do well to do so. I just don't know that the people are being, especially the townships, I have a true representation here. The cities, you know, through the city council may have good representation. I would not say that they don't, but I don't, uh, I do see there is a path for cities right now, that's not that, it's not, uh, needing legislation to fix that. I think for townships though, there is, there's no real easy path to get them into the district. And I think a petition essentially doesn't bring the entire township in. So this is very, very messed up in my opinion.
Sure.
And I'll just say, final comment, back to your previous comment to Chief. I agree, if we were to bring these in, we would, we would have to invest a little bit to enhance our response times in these areas. I did notice all these cities and all these townships are on the very edges of the county for the most, except for maybe Valley Center. And Colwich, those are not so far out. But the rest of these 11, the other nine, I should say, are on the, on the fringe of the county. So we do probably need to enhance our response timeout that way.
Appreciate it. A couple of comments here. Obviously I agree as Katie, we, at the very least, we need to go over our aid agreements and reanalyze our aid agreements. At the very least, there's some things there that obviously are incongruent with best practice, I think. The other thing too is it's obvious as we look at the resolution, that's what we're talking about today. It, it is obvious the taxing inequality and why people in Andale or Bentley or Goddard or Hayesville, Kechai, Mays, Park City, Bel Air, why they would say, hey, we're paying these taxes, but our neighbor is not, you're doing free work for them. It's obvious why some of those people, which we have heard from, are frustrated. I want to get to the other part of this resolution that talks about the safety of our firefighters and the safety of some of the constituents in the county that may not be fire district constituents. Chief, can you help us understand? And I, I appreciate, because like, like you, I do appreciate the volunteer fire departments and I know your history of volunteer fire departments. So this is not defaming volunteer fire departments, they have a role, they'll always have a role. But how to help us qualify a little bit as to the frustration that we read in the resolution with the safety that we're hearing from of our staff? The safety and anecdotally, why is this a part of the resolution?
We had an incident in, um, recently, not too long ago, where, um, one of the, the volunteer departments was, had a lack of turnout. And, um, it was a, it was a fire, house fire with possible persons trapped. And, and that's a, you know, that's a high stress environment when we get there. And in this environment, we, we were, um, we ended up in command, we ended up as a safety officer. We ended up with one engine company on the scene and they were put in a position of having to go vastly beyond what we would normally expect. You know, you got to understand NFPA 1710 and, and, um, and the effective fire force requirements require us to put 17 people minimum within, you know, I can't remember, seven to 11 minutes on a structured fire. You know, we meet that in our jurisdiction, we meet that, Wichita Fire meets that, Derby Fire meets that. I mean, we strive to complete that, that response force capability because it not only makes it an effective fire force, but it also provides a safety factor if we get people in trouble. force, but it also provides a safety factor if we get people in trouble. And when we go out and they have a total of four people show up on a scene and we only send three, it creates a, you know, a fire scene that's, and not only a fire scene, but a fire scene with potential people trapped of being grossly understaffed. And, you know, it was brought back to me by our staff that that's it. When we go out, we're taking more people with us, period, Chief. That's just the way it's going to be.
And these are on aid agreement calls, correct?
Yeah. And I said, hold it, hold it, hold it. You know, I've got a steering council that doesn't want their fire truck out there, you know, because they want it where it's paid for and where it's, it's supposed to be. So that brought it up and that environment created it. One thing that, that I really struggle with is command. You know, we are increasingly being in command of these fires. And yeah, these agreements give us some legal, I mean, some shielding from liability. Every one of them says, you know, you're not responsible for what happens in, when you go out. But, but I think people forget, when you're in command of a fire by all moral ethical guidelines and all training guidelines, the instant commander is ultimately responsible for everything that happens on that scene. And that instant commander is the person that makes a decision, go, no go, pull them out, go defensive, go offensive, go all in on a rescue, vest the second floor, they're making that decision. And you have to live your life with that. I do. And that's unfair to our commanders to be put in that role because some of these departments aren't, aren't being there, you know? I mean, it, it is tough, you know? When you go defensive, when you know there's people left in that house, it is tough. And I think it's unfair for our commanders to be put in that role.
Okay. Appreciate that. And it's not just one incident. There are multiple examples that we have where we're showing up on scene in an aid agreement call and we're asked to take command of the scene and we don't have the proper reinforcements because this is an aid call. This is, we're going there as a support. Is, am I understanding aid calls correctly? We're there as backup support?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Okay, next steps. Obviously, we have a resolution from the steering council, which we take very seriously. It's on recommendation of advisory board, as was mentioned and alluded to earlier, Commissioner Wise and I actually met and sat in on a meeting that you had with your district chiefs and staff. And it was very clear in there that, that they want the safety conversation to, to take precedent in this. So we're certainly going to look at aid agreements, mutual aid agreements, auto aid agreements, but we also need to visit with some of these cities and some of these townships and some of these volunteer fire departments. So I guess the next step, Rusty, Tom, next step is we need to be reaching out to have conversations there and bring them. The last thing I want the public or these volunteer departments or cities that are not in the fire district to think is that we're forcing you to come into the fire district. That, in the end, I do want to try to make a case while the service, the professional service that we get, the medical calls that we provide, all the other benefits that we have, that we can put a cost structure together that makes it a benefit to come to the fire district for safety and for coverage. I do want to make that case. We're not forcing anybody to come into the fire district. We're going to make a case, but we're not forcing that. But we do have to deal with these aid agreements in one way, shape or form. So next steps, Tom?
I, I think to meet with them and ignorance is bliss and we're not ignorant anymore. There are safety issues out here that have to be reconciled. They have to be.
And legal issues.
There's tax equity systems out here that have to be reconciled. So I think as we have these conversations, we just put our cards on the table. And, and there's ultimately three or four options that we could look at. But I think the next step is we have to talk to the voluntary agencies in the small cities that just makes sense, get them totally up to speed on where we're coming from and start those.
Yeah, we'll do this in partnership. Yeah. Chief, my last question is, I mean, aid agreements are a part of firefighting all across the country. How do we reconcile that?
Well, I think the difference you look at with these aid agreements is, you know, your aid agreement is set up, like I told earlier, you know, we can be mutually beneficial, you know, reciprocal, you know? I think the key thing is reciprocal. And, you know, we, Derby's an example, you know, they run calls for us out east of Derby in the fire district and that's very beneficial to us. You know, they provide a quicker response and they provide some ISO benefit to those people. But we also set with a five-person fire station on the outskirts of their city that's helping them meet their ISO requirements for the effective fire force. It's helping them meet their NFPA 17 person on scene within X number of minutes. And so, you know, we've got $2 million worth of payroll that's right there to help Derby, you know, every day they have a structured fire. And for that, they help us out east of Derby. That's a reciprocal beneficial agreement. We have the same types of agreements with Wichita. You know, we run a lot of, we run, I think that I looked at the numbers last year, it was nearly 6,000 cross-jurisdictional runs with Wichita Fire last year, you know, between them coming in us, us coming in them. And it's mutually beneficial because, you know, we end up running a few more calls in the city than they run out. But because of their station locations, they are providing, helping us meet that effective fire force quicker than our second, third outstation. So, I mean, you know, these are all reciprocal agreements that work very valuably. When you get out into rural areas, most of those agreements are driven more by, you know, when you're having your bad day and you're getting that fire that you can't handle by yourself, you get help. But increasingly, we're seeing where these are being normal daily business incidents and not just that bad day incidents.
That, that's helpful context. Okay. Any other questions here? This is good. Katie, thank you for being here. Please let the steering council know that we're received a resolution. We're going to start setting up meetings and there'll be action on the, on the fire board. There'll be follow-up actions that we'll keep you posted on.
Okay. Just let us know how we can be helpful.
Thank you. You guys are great. Appreciate it. Okay, Chief, thank you. Tom, anything else? Okay. Good productive day. Right at noon, we're right on schedule. Believe that. All right. See you guys tomorrow, 9:00 AM.